In terms of where we are, as you know, the contract that we are currently under with the COG and the COG is with the state expires June 30th or expired June 30th. We had, we are in the process of getting together our billing and each three county, each of the three counties is producing kind of the documentation of their progress and we'll be providing that and we've provided most of that information to the Road Valley Council of Governments to date and they will be submitting the closeout of this, of this Where we stand in terms of our progress is we have completed tasks one through four and Jackson County has completed about 60% of task five. Task one and two were kind of administrative tasks, well, task one was. Task two was providing an educational piece which we have prepared and have gotten to the DLC. Task three was that we would institute or initiate a task, a technical advisory committee, which you, which Jackson County did and the three counties did, and that we would have a steering committee. So those things we did and we accomplished with task three. Task four was to complete the maps, which we completed the 11 maps. We completed them for ourselves and as you know, we have a contract with Josephine County to do their mapping basically and we completed their maps as well. And then task five really is the analysis of those maps and kind of a strategy or looking at strategies for dealing with issues that we have with state law in relation to this project. And like I said, our tack probably was about 60% done with that. Our tack met, I think about five times, five or six times, and a lot of it was education, initially education. And then the tack at our last meeting came up with a short list of things that they wanted staff to look at. Those things included, there's something called a go below, which is a statutory provision that allows for areas within counties to go below the minimum density, which in EFU is 80, you know, 80 acres, if there's reasons for that. For example, if you have a viticulture area and it's, and you can show that for successful viticulture, successful commercial viticulture, that you don't need 80 acres, that you may need, you know, 15 or 20 acres, you can do a go below of a certain area. So the tack said, we want you as staff to go analyze a go below for Jackson County and kind of, and come back to us. All of these things were, these are some ideas we have, go kind of analyze them and come back to us. Another was allowing clustering in, allowing clustering for EFU. So for example, if you had very large parcels and the person, the person on our tack who was interested in this, has some clients who have some very large parcels and he, what he would like to be able to do is cluster development, have a lesser density and cluster the development and then have open space that could be farmed, let's say. So they wanted us to look at that. They wanted us to look at mapping errors, as you know, and we've talked about this kind of extensively, that there is a belief, and I think a belief based in fact, that there is, there were lands that during the time that we zoned land in Jackson County that were miszoned. And so they wanted us to go take a look at those two, look at that too. So the, our tack kind of is on a recess right now. And they wanted us to look at these things and then bring them back and we're starting to do some analysis. Other counties, Josephine County I think is similar to our county in the way they approached this process and with their tack, having it be more of a, be more open. And I think Douglas County had an idea, I think Keith Cubic had an idea of what he wanted to do and his tack, when he led his tack in that way. So we're compiling all the data that we have and providing that so that we can get a final payment. It looks like we're leaving about, because we didn't complete this grant agreement, which was $350,000, we had asked for the 130 that we wouldn't spend as carry forward and then we asked for an additional $116,000. John and I talked this morning about where that is and I had heard that DLCD was going to be finding that $116,000 in their budget and then later I had heard that there were some legislators that were still interested in finding that money and appropriating it outside of, into DLCD's budget, but not DLCD finding it in their budget. So we sent a letter that I think came from Susan Morgan and Keith Cubic and I worked on the letter, kind of explaining why we needed this additional $116,000 and where it was going to go. And it's primarily going to go into preparing the petition, doing some more, having more money to do increased analysis, having more money for the carrying capacity analysis because that, that task is a very large task. So basically you're identifying the areas that you might allow more development in and then you have to do a carrying capacity analysis to determine, you know, is there a carrying capacity from a road standpoint, from a fire standpoint, from, from just an infrastructure standpoint. And that can be a very difficult and detailed process to do that. So there was additional money allocated for that and then some additional money that was allocated for the COG because the contract was longer than, than they anticipated. And that was where that $116,000 came into. So I think, I don't know for sure if we're going to get the additional 116. It sounds like there's a really good chance that we are either coming from the legislators, legislature, or coming from DLCD itself, but I haven't, I don't know that yet. I haven't heard the final word. We did, the steering committee warned, the letter produced and sent to Jim Rue, the director of DLCD, to inform him that we were going to be requesting partial payment and I prepared that letter and that letter has been sent, on behalf of the steering committee, they signed it, Commissioner Asher signed it, Commissioner Garrett, Commissioner Morgan. And that letter has gone to Jim Rue because we are requesting partial payment for task And I anticipate that as this, once this contract, we get all the information up to the DLC and we get final payment, soon we are going to start working on a new contract. We can't amend this contract, so it's both, we will enter into a contract with the Road Valley Council of Governments, just like we did before, and the COG will enter into a contract with the state. I think there are two things that are important in this new contract and that, one of course is the money, but I think that's going to be, we don't have a lot of control over that. But I think the other thing is the timeline. When the steering committee met, so that's the three commissioners and staff, we talked about six months and I think Douglas County was pushing to have the contract be a six month contract because originally we had talked about this project only taking a year. I don't think that is optimal. I think that, I know that no one wants this project to look like regional problem solving to last 12 years and leave me idle either, but I also don't want us to be in a position kind of like we were now where we were saying, we can get this done and we can't because the timeline is too aggressive. And then the contract expires and then we're in this situation where the contract has expired, the money can't be rolled over and we're kind of in the situation we are right now. We're, we're in this situation because the legislature only gave us until June 30th, but we would be creating our own artificial constraint, in my opinion. We would have the money for two years, we would have the money for the biennium and I'm not necessarily saying that we need the money for two years or that the contract should be for two years, but I don't think six months is long enough, especially given the fact that Josephine County, if we were all thinking that we're all going to move together as three counties, Josephine County losing their planning director and having the sort of internal and then hiring someone new and us doing the analysis that needs to be done that will make the project successful with DLCD. I think a minimum we need nine months, a maximum we probably need 12. But I think six is, I think six is, it's aggressive to the point of, in my opinion, unrealistic.
You know, I like short timelines, but I, Kelly has convinced me, I agree with her now.
She's a heckman.
That if, that if we cut it too short, we do, we don't want to do a poor job because it would trend, you know, a short timeline. So I agree with her. A little more along.
Okay.
I would also think the situation with, not only with staff, with this city project, but as we start working on UGBs and expansion and such, I think that actually, I don't know how that would, you know, we're not going to have staff use for that as well, so.
Well, and that is a very, very good point because
Everyone's always somewhere, I mean.
No, that's a good point. We have a UGB expansion on, that's moving down the pipe and to get to be able to do that, there are several things that we need to do that are going to take time, staff time. And those, that is a priority as well, to be able to initiate those things and all of that. There are a variety of steps that we need to take prior to actually entertaining the UGB expansion for Central Point, for example. So that is going to take some time. So I want us to be able to do a good job. When John and I talked, he said, well, you know, the state may not want to give us, you know, too long and I said, well, but the state wants to give us long enough to where we, they think we can do a good job.
So would you, would, in this, could you ask for just 12 months rather than the two years?
Yes.
I mean, can we set that?
Mm-hmm.
What, what did you guys think about it? Because I, two years, I mean, I know you and your staff are, I mean, but, you know, it's, I guess I'm thinking of human nature, not everybody's like me that puts things off, so I'm appreciative of that, but I just think we need to have some
I would agree that we need to have, two years is too long. I mean, I, I would agree with that.
I mean, I have folks out there in the community who are kind of waiting to see what's going to happen and, and so.
What's your anticipation based on your current staff and the progress that you've seen with the progress, what you see in the end date? If you were to look at the crystal ball and say, how long is it going to take?
Best case, it's nine months.
That's great.
So if we gave you nine months and then they gave you the three months for a little bit of a break period, would you wait?
Well, it's sort of, it doesn't, it can't work like that because the way the contract is written, and it's a silver plate state contract, is that we
Well, he's saying give you the 12 months.
Oh, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, okay.
What I'm saying is, look at a 12 month contract with an expectation that this will be completed in nine.
That would be, that would be great.
So just one thing, maybe John said, because he has to go back to the steering committee, last time, I don't think you were here when we talked about this last time, Kelly wasn't here.
John and I talked about it.
John, yeah, you weren't here.
You weren't here, John and I.
But John was, that's when he wanted this to be done in six months really because I think Susan Morgan was motion for it, as Kelly said, but what, and I said then, I don't mean to repeat myself, but for purpose of this, is Douglas County isn't trying to accomplish the same thing that we're trying to accomplish, but Susan Morgan is very persistent that she wants this done in six months because what they're trying to accomplish is different than what we're trying to accomplish. So John really needs some support from you guys, not just that we want to enter into a contract for 12 months because this is a regional agreement. I mean, each county negotiates their own agreement, the project doesn't move forward unless at least two of the three parties can move forward. And the only thing that, so, so, I mean, it's going to be a pretty strong position for you guys to support the steering committee, I think. And then the only other thing that I think is important is the thing that will slow us down is carrying Josephine County. I mean, you know, because there's going to be other things in this process that they don't have the capacity to do. I don't know if they have the capacity to repair a position. I mean, they have one planner right now. So probably we're going to be asked to do that like we were asked to do these other tasks and that's going to slow us down even more, so this is one way to understand that we're carrying those people too is one of the reasons why.
So bottom line is, you think you're confident that you can have a 12 months?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm confident that we can have a product, not, and when John and I talked, remember, it's not our LDO change or our comp plan change, it's this project done. And then from that comes either a petition and maybe we do a petition and maybe we don't. Maybe we can do what we need to do without a petition. If we can, that would be great because that's very complex and arduous and long process, but if we need to do a petition, then we have the resources to do a petition through this project. That happens within one year and then it really is in the state's court.
I thought, I thought petition, I thought that was part of, I thought we were requesting a petition and in the discussion, we knew, given that in the original contract, that Jim Rue says, you're probably not going to get this, we're not going to drop dead if we don't get the petition, but we wanted something by June 30th. Okay, right, I mean, whatever that something was, but I would think, again, I don't know all the inner workings, but I would think if we're asking, you know, we're going to get the extra money and we say in 12 months, I would, if I was a state, I would expect a petition at that time. Is that, so, but that's not a, that's not a deal breaker?
It isn't.
Okay.
If, so, we absolutely need a petition if we are going to amend the definitions of farm and forest land. So far, our tack has not expressed an interest in that, nor have the other two tacks, nor have the other two counties expressed an interest in amending the definitions of farm and forest land.
So the things that we'd want to do, like the go below or
Correction.
Correcting.
Correction, all of those, you can actually do internal to our land use processes at the county. Now, that doesn't mean can't get appealed to the state and go through that whole process, but it can. The, the part about petition, well, why it's better if we don't have to do that is when, if we file a petition and look for the new definitions, that requires modification of statewide land use goals and that requires a statewide process for all 36 counties essentially. And obviously we'd want to avoid that because, you know, it's going to happen probably. If we make, we'll get a petition, but then, you know, the state's going to, doesn't necessarily want to see a statewide change in land use goals. So if we can do what we want to do locally, through your local land use process, that's the preference. And that money, you know, I mean, essentially, I don't think DL, I think DLCD would like to see us do something locally and not amend statewide land use goals. So I think that via the agreement and negotiations, once we get this information, the client's working on gathering, right, all of it, vetting through all of this analysis of each of those things that Kelly presented, then we'll know better and we'll come to you guys and say, you know, we want to approach the state about doing it this way, do you support that or not, or do you want to do something different or whatever, so.
So John, you're all right with that?
Yep. A big thing that I think we're trying to accomplish is the correction, you know, of the initial land.
I have another question on the go below's concept. If I understand that correctly, will you go below like a 3EFU concept and decide if 20 acres or 40 acres are going to be a better use of that type of land? That, that gets appealed with the DLC, correct? Potentially, it has the potential to be appealed.
Is, no?
It, it does if we do it as a goal exception map. So when someone wants to do it now, they come in essentially, and, you know, I've, I've told the story of the commissioners when, previous boards say, hey, we want you to really kind of facilitate these things. I think we did 17 of them in a year and all 17 of them were overturned.
Right.
That's the process you're talking about. This essentially would create the process like we do with the goal letting exceptions for, you know, the hook into the sewer. Essentially, the hearing would be at the front end to allow for this, that's where that could get appealed, but then the individual processes, the right on the back of that hearing that we already did. I mean, that would be the
That's what I need, that time, so I want to make sure it goes with the, the backdoor, so to speak, as things could stop looking.
Well, there's always an opportunity for, there's always, there's always an opportunity for that in land use, but like Danny said, it comes at the front, sort of via our process as opposed to coming on each individual property owner who comes forward. So, so it is better in that way because it's, no one has the expectation that they're going to get something unless they get it from us and we would go through that process and work to get appeal.
And that's probably the only advantage to the statewide legislative process that they've been talking about is it does avoid litigation because it's a
It doesn't avoid it, it just minimizes.
Yeah, and it frankly takes us out of the next step, it would effectively be a state's litigation death.
This is like a, a good example of what some could, that could be accomplished, you know, in our rural use where you can zone down to five acres if you can do the soil verification in terms of, I'm sorry, 20 and 15 cluster, I'm sorry. We first proposed five acres, that was six years ago, so, sorry, I forgot, but anyways. That's done on an individual basis, so each one of those, right? But if we did it on the front side and we already identified these land use criteria driven, then that reduces that exposure. When you say can they, you know, anyone can file a lawsuit, doesn't matter even if we file, follow everything we're supposed to follow, anyone can file an appeal even if we're, right, I mean, right, because it's so gives people the opportunity to do that, which it should, but it minimizes the likelihood of us failing and succeeding.
And it's like with that, with goal letting. So we did the process and we said, we're going to take these 600, 1,600 parcels and we're going to allow them to hook onto sewer because they meet this criteria. If the sewer company, if they pay, they have to, they have to take care of all that, we're just giving them the ability to. That could have been appealed. It wasn't. So now, if someone comes in and meets the criteria, while it can still be appealed technically, chances of anyone winning are pretty much zero because they meet the criteria. So that's kind of what we're looking at here, taking it, taking it and dealing with it on the front end so that property owners don't have to deal with it as they
And how someone would feel is they would argue it doesn't meet the criteria.
Right.
Right.
Do you need anything else from us from the, from the steering
Nope.
The steering committee. Do we have another steering committee in your schedule?
We don't have one scheduled, but we will be getting one scheduled soon.
I'm wondering if you have a comment about Susan. Yeah, I can do that. So she's, we, you know, just kind of agree. Okay, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Can we make the formal action on the contract for 12 months or anything?
We'll bring it back.
Bring it here, right?
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're going to go back now to the, to number one, the structural parking spaces of Harriet David Field, I asked this to be, I didn't realize this, but evidently, well, I know evidently, I know they're at, where they're at now. There's, and Danny can, can give the, the details on this about when the Harriet David Field was developed and et cetera, but true, very much with land and so on and so forth. The county ended up with, or there were three parking structures right in front of the stadium, right, as you pull in on the left hand side near Mark, Jackson County Commissioner or something, usually or something like that, I can't remember exactly what it's central. It actually came up in a sent to ask column, you know, somebody, I don't know what it said, right, so what's this all about? And that was brought to my attention. And so I thought it'd be a good thing to get on the agenda because I don't think we need it. I meant, I understand, Danny, go ahead and give the details how it all came about, there's no, nothing nefarious about how it came about, but they're there. So if you want to give a little background on that, Danny?
Yeah, this actually happened in roughly 2005 here when it happened, either Rennett View or Redd, but essentially, when the county relocated the field from the sale of the property from the juvenile facility in the old baseball field and contribute that, I think around, you know, 3.2, 3.2 million dollars. A condition of the county donating that money and facilitating the transaction was that they would provide the county parking spots, three parking spots. And the, essentially the county, the county owns those parking spots, even though there's a whole fiddle around it and parking, I mean, that's essentially how the agreement is structured. So they've been sitting there for, I think, since 2005. I mean, that's the short version of how much more you want.
No, that's fine, I just how it came about was all I wanted you to talk about. So, you know, we have a, we have a policy that nobody, it's against county policy for any official to use their position or privilege or, I don't know what they're right. Personal, well, personal gain, absolutely, but privilege or gee, was because you're a commissioner, you get to go ahead and tell the line or, you know, or you get, whatever the case, you get a free lunch at such and such or whatever, that's, that's against county policy. This actually falls and flies in the face of that, even though we're unaware of it. So in my opinion, I think it'd be good to approach Gary Miller or, yeah, who I would approach and say, thanks, we know we own it, but we're releasing our rights to that, use it for, to promote, maybe, maybe they get somebody like Carrie David or somebody or Pacific Power, spend something special, they can have a special night, they get those three spaces, you know, something like, how do they want to use it?
I don't know of anybody who's ever used it, frankly. I mean, I think it's just, the, the contract, and I'm not, you know, it's like a freeway land transaction, so I'm not really even sure who, like I said, I was in here, so I don't know the exact details of how it was negotiated, but the contract requires they be labeled, you know, so.
Is this real property of the county?
Well, essentially the county bought the rights to use the property, but it's, I mean, he bought the rights by the donation, but the county provided a 3.2 million dollars or whatever. I mean,
It's like a lease. We basically have county rights to control those spaces. That, that's really the essence of it. It was part of the development agreement that we had entered with the city of Bedford.
And part of that contract is the
Yeah, there's actually two things like that. One was there's a plaque at the stadium entrance acknowledging that the stadium was made possible by the generous contribution of the county. And then the other thing that was obtained by the county, again, in recognition of the 3.2 million dollars, was effectively to control over those three spaces. So we don't own the land underneath them, we just have some rights to control them in the development agreement.
I don't think it's a big deal to get rid of it. I mean, it's not something that we would negotiate today, I can
No, no. I was just sort of curious if it was real property, the way it was described.
So I want to get, what I'm asking is your commission, the board's commission to contact Gary Miller?
Well, we probably would do that. He just directs that to him in the contract, right?
Yeah, because it's contractual, you have to change the contract.
Yeah.
The development agreement.
Okay. If that's the way it's going to be done.
Yes.
You know, I, Mr. Chair, if I may, I certainly don't need a personal parking spot out there, even though I always plan on going to the games, you know, and haven't taken advantage of that. Something I might suggest and maybe it's not worthwhile is if there might be someone we can designate that to, oftentimes we, we recognize people as being good citizens, you know, the, or citizen of the month, something like that, we could, well, not only four months or three months they play baseball. Or maybe it could be designated for senior citizens or maybe, you know, the city of Bedford could, you know, I don't know if they honor somebody every month, but, but I agree with you, I would turn it over to Mr. Miller and let him decide. We don't have a concrete, I think that's what we want to do.
Gary doesn't own the property. The development agreement has none of the Gary, I don't know, I make Gary manage the property out there, but I don't think Gary owns the property. You're certainly welcome to call Gary, since we have a contractual agreement, it'll have to be modified.
City man, property.
Yeah.
Does that understand?
No.
Do whatever we need.
Yeah, I don't, I sure don't need a personal parking spot.
I was thinking at the desk all day, I like to walk.
Okay. All right, very good, thank you. The next thing is the structural travel and liaison and committee assignments. I asked this to be put on the I asked this to be put on the committee, on the, on the calendar. Just, we had talked about this during our, uh, our retreat, uh, just want to make sure that as we're, we're watching, each one of us are, right, we're watching our expenses and such as we, as we make, we, we have a travel, a part of our budget, there is a travel expense in there and meeting expense and so on and so forth. And I just wanted that we're cognizant of that and, uh, and we're, and we're watching our expenses on that. I'm not, I don't watch it, that's not my business, it's not, I don't mean that, but I just, just, just want to make sure that it's all, in fact, if people are wondering about, well, do we have this commissioner, that commissioner, all commissioners here, there, and all over who's paying for that, I just want us to be, this time of, of economic difficulties, we're, we're sensitive to that.
Well, I would say that for the rest of this calendar year, I have no travel planned other than those monthly O and C meetings that I go to, and they're usually in Saban. They're always in Saban. And, uh, and I would be more than happy to pay for those myself if we got to that position where there's a concern about expense travel. I feel those are valuable.
Yeah, they are valuable and, and, and with the NACO such, and you, you two have have positions on the NACO board or, or NACO committees, and we have those responsibilities. I understand that, this isn't, I just, that we...
I think the board's been very respectful of public dollars over this last fiscal year. I went back to bolding numbers to sort of see where we were for 2012 budget cycle. And the board only executed 50.48% of their travel budget, of what was budgeted, so it's well under, but I think the board's doing a good job of, of, of the insightful how it's been spent.
Okay, all right, we're just, for a discussion. Anything else on that? All right, uh, next we come to the Taylor Grazing Committee, John, Commissioner Rapp.
Well, we've kicked this around for a while. We've kicked this around for a while, there's a Taylor Grazing Act, we have a fund, I believe it has about $23,000 in it, and, uh, and I've asked EnRAC to do a little research on, uh, and they came up, and they've come up with a letter of which I believe we have redone it.
Yes, and there, there's copies.
And we've redone it, so it doesn't come from the EnRAC, it comes from the commissioners. So it was one of our faculty that...
They do value it.
That's the draft that EnRAC proposed, their recommendation, so we'll have to put it for you guys if you don't.
So Jennifer, am I to understand, on the, on the, on this original draft one, they had some recommendations down there, you know, say Lee Bradshaw, Eugene Stitt, so would this letter go to those people?
They had a list, yeah, they had a list of folks that they thought it should go to.
Okay.
And it's on the back of that page, you have there.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see that.
So the question is, you, you want to take a look at those folks and, and decide, I'm not sure based on, I don't know, when all gave you background on those folks or whether EnRAC did.
And this would not be a subcommittee or anything, wouldn't have anything to do with EnRAC, really, we just add something because they have, they have agriculture committee and they've come up with some names, I guess, or so.
The, the second paragraph is kind of what's remain, not necessarily the names, I mean, yeah, three ranchers, one land management professional, one fish and wildlife professional. Those people may be who you want, but if there's other people, you know, you know, it's not limited to that. You, you do appoint them, they do recommend to you, you have 23,913.68 cents.
So I would say that I, what I would like is that we would send this letter out and then we'll get a list of names back and then we'll bring them before the board, talk about them, make a recommendation.
Okay. We have that.
Does the, uh, second paragraph here bind us to three ranchers, one land management, one fish and wildlife?
Yeah, and I believe that's in the bylaws.
The statute, you have the statute.
The statute and bylaws.
Yeah.
Hey, you, I, I'd have to look, because it's been a long time since I looked, but you can amend the bylaws, you can't change the statute.
Right.
The statute specifies that are your bylaws.
It should be, you guys should have copies of the statute along.
Well, we have, we got the citation for the statute, but 2935, 75. I, I can look for you guys if you, if you're interested in changing that, to see if it's actually legally possible.
Right.
If that's what you want.
Would you want to change it? Or are you just worried about not being able to fill some of those?
You know, I, I noticed in some of our other committees, we're having these same conversations about tying it to specific industry.
Right.
And being able to fill things based on that industry. And if we're going to, are we repeating the same mistake that we made in the past by having that here? So if I just add it to a question to be raised, that's all.
Well, it is valid because we might not be able to be able to find a fish and wildlife professional.
So I would ask that we look at the statute and if that is statute and it's required, then so be it. But if it's not required by statute, then we look supposedly at bylaws to allow us a little more flexibility in that.
Well, what do you think, we send the letter out, we see who replies, and if we have enough to fill with things, are we going to have full bylaws?
Because then we're not fixing the procedure.
Would still affect those, or if we had a resignation or something down the road.
And rather have it in place and running and not have to have the new committee that's being formed that would deal with a bunch of cleanup, have given, given the product to work on and send it to work.
You know, the thing is, I, I can see why it's set up the way it is, I mean, these are the folks who would, who are responsible for, for the, for what is supposed, that committee is supposed to do, the Taylor Grazing Act is supposed to accomplish, uh, so I can, I can see why it is set up this way.
But you, it's simple language, we'll give preference to, and if I'm able to fill, it can be at large or something like that. So it's still just guidance to go that direction, but if you can't get it, then you give the flexibility to go through the document.
Well, I'll tell you what, let's, as you suggested, while we, we research and see if there's, if there's an opportunity, then we'll come back and discuss, no sense in, in doing it now, if in fact it's a loop point, so.
The statute, we do have, I didn't know, I just looked through it, it doesn't specify those in the statute, so it's probably...
It's clearly bylaws, probably is.
And, um, assuming it is bylaws, if he wants to make an amendment, the only thing is, I'll tell you that, you know, there's not a lot of complaining about this because there's not a lot of money. It's 23,000 bucks and the fund does not grow hardly at all. Um, is, um, you know, it affects ranchers, that's why there's three ranchers on here. So, uh, I don't know about the other two, if they're as important or not, but, um, I think they are because you're looking at wells for fishing, wildlife and water supply and that kind of stuff, so. Uh, but we can put at large, I would probably limit the amount of at large, the amount of, by at large people on there making decisions for ranchers who, you know, but if you give me some direction about how you want it, assuming I'm correct, because I read the statute and it's not in the statute, so if it must be in the bylaws, is we can make an amendment to the bylaws and bring it back pretty quick. Or we can wait if you want, but if you know what you, what you'd like to see this be, I mean, what, what Commissioner Reifall recommended in terms of, you know, preference will be given to a point in this manner and fashion, however, you know, the board, at whose discretion may allow one of those positions or two of those positions to be at mar or here for their own.
Okay. This looks fairly small, I have to drag it out and do all the staff time and everything, you know, so.
If you want one at large, two at large, if you care, I want a limit or no limit.
I would say no more than one. Okay. All right. Okay, item number four, discussion on public lands, Doug.
Basically, this, we had some discussion on Table Rock process here the other day, and I don't know if you were here, I don't think you were.
No, that wasn't even discussed. It sounded like I was never here, Mr. One.
Well, we did a lot that one, maybe, yeah. Anyway, we had some discussion on how the, the board should take a policy on that or a letter on that. I spent Friday afternoon with John Raby on that, on that tour with the Protection Association. And one thing he basically reiterated to me, and I thought it was correcting my, my thought process there, is that we are government to government and we're not subject to the public notice concept or the, when public comment period. So if we have, want to get into a position early, we could take that position, issue a letter, and that letter would weigh into their decision-making based on our coordination declaration. And that would give us the ability to do as such early on in the process, to coordinate with them. So when it goes to public opinion, this is the direction it's already heading. So, um, that's kind of why I wanted to approach the, the concept here, is what's our, how are we going to do this, what's our policy, where are we going to sort of move forward with this type of stuff? Are we going to wait for public comment to do this, do we want to come up with positions on these things early? We want to work in, because I was under the impression we're working coordinated to get this up, move in the direction we want to move it. So that's why I kind of asked for that to be here today, is what's our general policy on the public lands and how are we going to move forward with that?
Well, I guess when you ask about our general policy, that is a general policy, I think, so unless you want to be a little more specific, but I'll, I'll refer over here to my expert here on my left on public lands, so. Well, Doug, do you feel that we're not being notified?
No, we're, we're being notified.
Let, let me help articulate what he's trying to say, because, um, he's talking about specific instances, and just not, I think, the point about is, they met and talked about their opposition to putting restrictions on Table Rock. That's what they're talking about. And they discussed formulating input into that, stating their opposition to continuing to implement or petitioning to implement those ongoing restrictions, why they do the land use management plan on the Table Rocks. And Doug had sent me an email saying I thought we agreed to send a letter, and I sent an email back saying, well, you agreed to a position, but you didn't agree to send a letter. And really, it hasn't even been filed as a, as an action yet by BLM, so there's nothing to respond to yet. Once it's filed as an action, then they will open up a public comment period, and I think , uh, Commissioner Reifall explained this part correctly, is you could choose, once they file, to state your position before they open a public comment period. But right now, they haven't taken action to put those restrictions yet. He was here saying that that's what he was planning on doing, but he can't do it himself. He has to petition Department of Interior and state the reasons why. So there's really not anything to respond to yet, he would just essentially be stating a policy position without knowing what it is you're positioning against, except for the conversation that Mr. Raby had with the board, uh, which may or may not end up being what he actually petitions for, so. But you do have the option, as Doug says in the coordination, of stating policy position and having them consult you on your policy position, you know, financial, social, environmental policies. Um, in fact, it's a requirement of them under coordination if there's need or flit, which in this case there would be, uh, prior to the public commentary, you're supposed to be able to have that opportunity. The only thing that I would caution you for at this point is there's not really anything to comment on yet because they haven't even, hasn't taken the action to file with Department of Interior or, uh, not Department of Interior, they're, uh, head agency.
Yeah.
So, I mean, once they do that, then the question is, do you want to state your policy position right away, or do you want to wait till the public commentary, it's truly up to you? I think that's what he's asking.
Well, that's part of it, but actually what I wanted to know is, do we want to get, I think we have opportunity here that might have influence on what the petition might look like going into Department of Interior. And, and that's why I was asking the question, because they're open to having the discussion and to be able to influence what the petition would look like. And it's not, if Table Rock is an example, but this can be done throughout the broad spectrum, so I was trying to keep it broad for a reason, but it was, it's broad spectrum on all aspects of this, so that we sort of develop a process of working with them, because it's a, as they do, the, and it kind of leads us into, uh, a little bit of another agenda item here, on that coordination concept. When they come in and do a presentation with us, it gives us an idea where they're at, and then by us putting, feeding input back into the system early, it helps derive that and direct that without having a big hangup later. It makes us more, we're more working together on what you say.
Well, let's, coordination's applicable to an action. It's not applicable to, you know, to, to everything they do up until they take an action.
Right.
And so, you know...
I'm just seeing opportunity, I mean, we can do it that way, because I know it's textbook, but this, I just see a little opportunity to help us guide the vote a little bit.
Well, yeah, I, I agree, but Ray, when John Raby was here, he said, you know, we're still going to probably file which regardless of what you think, because that's what they're planning on doing. They have to take your, they have to consult you, which they did, but they don't have to do what you say.
So Danny, are you saying we should, you think we should wait until they take the action?
I'm not saying I don't think, not until they actually put the restrictions on, but right now you would be commenting on something that there's nothing to comment on. They haven't filed a petition, you don't really know, I mean, you know from having a conversation with Mr. Raby, this is a intention to continue, they're not adding restrictions, they're continuing the current restrictions while they put a land use management plan in place, which they're required to do within a certain period of time. And you oppose that they would continue those restrictions essentially, I mean, I'm paraphrasing because you had a long conversation about it. But he was, he was essentially here giving you a proposal. It's not anything that he's done, he hasn't filed a petition yet, so, um, what, what you would be, uh, uh, disagreeing with hasn't been defined yet. I mean, so you're essentially saying, unless you just want a broad policy spectrum, which you have said this at times, that you're generally opposed to additional restrictions. I mean, you certainly could tell them that you're generally opposed to, to restrictions, but you don't really know yet what they're proposing.
Specifically, I mean, I think you hit on that, that broad policy concept, do they know where we stand on this? Because right now they, I don't know if they're, I mean, besides our morning breakfasts and stuff like that and that conversation, there's nothing out there that really defines where we're at. So they know how, if they were to put a memo out to their personnel, that is where county is.
And what I was saying to you, John, is this, they can go file this petition, they can go through this whole public process, they can have a public comment period, they can hold meetings, they can do all of that. They have not violated any condition of coordination until they actually do something like implement the restriction.
Right.
Okay? But up until the point they implement the restriction, there's no, we have no recourse because they haven't done anything yet in terms of taking an action, so. But if, once they take that action, if they didn't do these steps back here, that's our standing.
Well, but I, I have to agree with, with your thought process, I think I understand your thought process. Once they come up with their petition or their idea, they're going to be more apt to back it up, you know, where if we can give input early in that process, maybe before they take that position.
And I think, Danny, you hit it, is a broad policy concept statement. And it doesn't preclude us from being able to say, once they petition a certain individual project, then we can make a statement on that project again. And, and, but it gives us a baseline from our general policy to be able to, to reference from.
What, what your, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but it's really their responsibility to consult you, not your responsibility to tell them this. I'm not telling you don't do it because I think it's a good idea, but I think you kind of let them off the hook to some extent, because really what should happen under the coordination requirement, and it wouldn't, it wouldn't be that they violated that until they took an action, but let's go back to where I said, all it's the steps they take beforehand, is they really should prepare a petition, and before they file it, they should bring a specific petition and discuss it with you, not come here and generally make some generalized statements about what they intend to do. And I would not let them off the hook for that. I would, if you want to, you know, say you have this general prohibition, but each of these agencies, you know, prior to, you know, filing or going through these processes, their, I mean, coordination requires of the consultant prior to any public action, right? So a public action would be a formal filing of that petition with Department of Interior. And they didn't come and talk to you about the specifics of that petition, they talked to you generally about their, you know, what they anticipate doing. And so, you know, I'm just, you know, just because of how they've dealt with this so far, I, you know, it's kind of like the issue that we had with, uh, BLM and the, uh, cooperation agreement, cooperation, coordination agreement, is they're going to feel like they've satisfied that need. You gave them input, so they've satisfied that need and they'll fit that. So I think, anything that you would want to send them for a general policy is probably a good idea, but I would disclaim it and say, you know, that you still expect them and you would welcome the fact that they would, once they prepared this, they would come and talk and discuss it with you, I just would be careful about giving up, you know, any, um, standing that you have.
Well, and I guess one of my big concerns, I think we've talked about it before, is if we wait too long in the coordination process, or say, we feel that they, and they have coordinated with us, and we call them on it, and the judge, the only reaction is, the judge tells them go to do that again, and then we have a new restriction somewhere that we didn't want, but we didn't have the opportunity because they didn't, you know, and they, they don't reverse their decision, they just get their hat slapped for it. And I don't have a process.
But basically, this, I remember the bottom of the general policy statement that we gave, that was, still, hold our statement? we gave, that was, still hold our statement?
It may. I mean, again, you know, you look at the, the level of risk tolerance and, and it sounds, you know, too cold and calculated about this, but again, it's right that the best legal approach is you, you put them to the test and make them meet their requirements and don't give them any advantage to argue that what the commissioners did was cooperation, should be coordination. So, so, you know, it's just this continuum of risk. You're better off with nothing. If you have something, you're better off with a disclaimer at the bottom. And your worst position is, at least from a coordination standpoint, is to just coordinate with them when they aren't meeting their obligations with respect to coordination. So yours is probably somewhere in the middle. Nothing is probably the ideal from a legal perspective, but not the best from a policy perspective. I agree with the board, at least what I'm hearing, the two of you say, and that is, the earlier you get input, the more likely the form of the petition is going to reflect some of the concerns expressed by the board. So.
And please do remember that although they're required to consult with you and consider your policies, they're not required to do what you want them to do. So the best defense in your case is for them not to follow a procedure and us not to enable them to be able to follow a procedure if you want to have a legal challenge.
But, but probably the best from an input perspective is more along the lines of what you're talking about. Provide some input and attempt to disclaim as much as you can and hope that if you have to take action in the future, will be the perspective, you know, a judge will agree that, that there were still coordination responsibilities on the part of the agency that were not met.
I'm just getting this general sense from working with, in the, of those organizations and talking to them. And even when the Evelyn, oh, was it Conrad came on Wednesday from the Natural Resource Conservation Services out of Roseburg and spoke to us, that was a direct result of our letter, the coordination letter that we just sent out. And I'm seeing this, this shift a little bit, saying they want to start that coordination. They want to start working with us at the county level on.
Well, we've seen, when we, we've got serious about that over a year now, which we've seen.
Yeah.
More letters.
Yeah. So that, the one we recently sent out to the Secretary of Interior. That was the, that was the driving force that brought her here because the secretary contacted the State Director who contacted her and said, we'll talk.
So I think the best, I mean, I'm just going to give you my opinion. I'm not saying that what you want to do is a bad idea because, you know, it's a good idea if we consider to do it. Probably the thing that preserves your ability to act in a legal manner the most and covers the policy issue is you each are liaison, each of these agencies. And I'm assuming you're the liaison if you're meeting with John Rehbi, but maybe not, whoever is.
I'm the BLM liaison.
You have liaison for every single one of the 33 federal agencies that we contact and you each took assignments for those, but.
It's not on that chief that's on the head of the coordination.
But here's what I was going to say, probably, and I would do this in email, so it's in writing, is I would send, in this case, or for any of either liaisons who wanted to have a general policy discussion with them, is I would send John Rehbi, who I'm the liaison, as an email saying, hey, you were here to talk to the board. I'm a liaison to you for purposes of coordination. The board's assigned me to do that. In order to meet your obligations under coordination, we believe that you should have to present to us this draft petition before you would take action to file it. We expect you to honor that. You, you, you know, you bought, and you could even say in the email, you know, the board discussed and has a, a general policy against additional restrictions. You guys did that. It's all in a public meeting. You guys are allowed to use that as liaisons when the board discusses something formally in a public meeting and have the county back it up. But then you've documented, you've done everything you just said you wanted to do, plus you put the responsibility on them meeting their coordination requirements rather than sending a letter saying you just don't want restrictions on them.
Where's, where's our policy?
Our coordination policy?
No, our, our bus restriction type policy that we just talked about.
Well, you guys met, I'm talking about the specific example, and John said, we need, Don wasn't here, so, you know, I'm sorry, Don, you're not going to remember this. It's not because of meetings, it's because this guy discussed it the same meeting. But John said, you know, he just has a general opposition to placing any restrictions or continuing restrictions. He wanted to remove it and you agreed with that.
Yeah.
You're a quorum of the board. That's, that's a policy position.
I understand, but I guess that was never, and that's why it was sort of topic of discussion. I kind of feel like we captured the driving, so that we have that policy in front of us so that we're operating on the same page and not just a recollection from a meeting.
Well, it's not a recollection. It's documented in the minutes of the meeting, your discussion on that. It's public record and it's binding once there's a quorum that agrees to something, so.
Don't think we did an official action. Doesn't have to be an official.
No, it's not official. You don't have to pass a board order saying this is your policy. You, you know, policies can be done by the way that you act. They don't have to be stated. They can be, this is what we do. Right? They're stronger if they're written or they're documented. They're even stronger if you pass a board order. They're even stronger if you pass a local ordinance like you did with the coordination policy. You made it an ordinance. And of course, they're most strong if you can put it into law. But, and essentially that's what you did, is a local ordinance versus statutory law. So you can do it either way. I guess, you know, it's so fluid depending on what the issue is, and this is what the problem is, man, trying to write something in policy, unless it's just going to be broadly general. And broadly general is you've been against restrictions. I mean, what else would you write in a policy? Because the problem is each little thing that they're going to coordinate, let's take, they're going to put a culvert over a road that requires an environmental impact statement. You guys don't want them to come coordinating with you on a culvert in a road.
Yeah.
So each little issue is going to have, you may not want to coordinate on it at all. You may not care what the policy is. You may care more about Table Rock than you care about, you know, something else. And you may agree with the restrictions for something where you wouldn't agree with one somewhere else. I know generally you don't, but that's the problem with having a, you know, a written policy that this is our position because the way coordination works is the way you've drafted your coordination policy to work, and you could change this. In fact, I think the consultant that you use proposed, remember creating a, a manual of every single policy position that you would have on something, which would require you to essentially assume every single scenario that you could. And you guys said, no, we don't want to do that. You didn't, Doug, because you were here at the board at the time, so they didn't like that. So you said you would look at each issue on a case by case basis, and that's what you've been doing. And sometimes you have, have the same policy for a certain issue like the closure of those, and I don't mean to, not prehensile stuff, but you have a different, uh, position on the closure of those two logging roads. Right? Closing access to the public. And generally, you don't want access to public lands closed off to the public. But in that case, you, two of the three of commissioners agree that that's what you want. So having a general policy, you know, that wouldn't have been in line with the policy.
So I have a question here. If we have a general policy, okay, and, and one of us is liaisons of a particular agency during our, our meetings with them, whether we're scheduled or coffee class or whatever the case may be, and something comes up and, and as an individual commissioner, we state to X agency that it's our policy that, that this isn't allowed, or whatever this is. Do we need to, do we, when we make a statement like that to someone, do we need to let someone else know? Because if I'm a rogue out there and I, you know, I could say whatever I want to in talking to Rick Wicklock, who is head of ODF, no, whatever the case may be, not ODF, because I've been to work with, with state agencies, who should know what I'm telling them? So, so that agency head or that designated person of authority, blah, blah, wherever that person is in the chain of command, go away and say, well, I talked to commissioners coming and to, to the policy of the, of the board, of Jackson County Board of Commissioners, is yada. And it's really been nada. What, what, what kind of checks and balances do we have?
Well, here's the deal. In the example that I just gave, the board actually had a discussion about that specific issue and, and discussed what their position.
I understand.
So essentially, and I'm not directing how you guys do this. You can do it however you want, but essentially, the way that you set up your policy and your liaisons, which you weren't here to agree to, but you two agreed to, is that you would have those discussions as individuals and bring that information back to the board.
Okay. That's, that's, that's what I wanted to know.
And that's what happened on this Table Rock thing is somebody had a discussion with John Rehbi. He brought it to the board. The board had two different discussions. If I remember, there were actually two different meetings where it was discussed and had, and then took a position. If you represent that position as the position of the board, then you're not liable or hold any, you know, individual liability for that. If you represent, first of all, an individual commissioner can't bind the county.
Right.
So if you go out and say something that's contrary to what a quorum of the commissioners do, first of all, it's not binding. Now, the other side may not know that, but it's not legally binding. Secondly, you may have personal liability if there's a legal, financial, or other type of consequence if the majority of the board choose not to defend the fact, as you said, that you're a rogue out there doing what you want to do on your own. That doesn't mean that they can't choose to still defend it, but they could choose as a board not to direct staff or resources toward defending something that may have occurred because of the results of what you did. So it's in all of your best interests to consult each other as a quorum.
Okay. Well, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at. So it is, I'm just, that's for me as much as, as my two fellow commissioners do. We're, we're, we have a discussion. I would bring back, we're talking about something, this is, now if we need to have a discussion as a board of commissioners, we can do that. Because we, I may have misinterpreted what I thought you guys were saying. But, you know, Don, and I'm concerned about that a lot. I might go to the breakfast of the BLM, the only one there, and tell them, it's only my position that, but I want another wilderness area, and then they construe that to me, that's a board's position. So I'm reluctant to even give my own opinion, but I don't give one. I'm worried that's a board opinion, that's not.
I, I think this is coming together nicely in terms of coordinating with the agencies. And I think Doug's done a lot of work on it. Well, yeah, but I'm talking about the specific issue is, you know, the next thing on your agenda is, you know, inviting these aid areas agencies to come and talk to you. Now, we invited them to enter into a memorandum of understanding or agreement about how we would coordinate. They're not comfortable with that. I mean, I don't think, in fact, I know not one of them agreed to do that. We have told them, you know, we're going to, we're using our legal authority to demand our rights to coordination, and, and they know that they have an obligation. So what's, I, I think what's beginning to happen is, and this is not just because of that, I said, Doug, on this particular issue, but it is because of the last year and a half of you, you know, reaching out and doing, is when these agencies come in, like Mr. Rehbi did, and begin discussing these things with you, then you can begin formulating positions on these issues. And then when you are a liaison, you, you have standing as a board. You always can say, this is my individual opinion. But when you go and say, this is the position of the board, it has standing, as an individual, it does not have any binding or legal standing in terms of an action on behalf of the county. So it's better, it's always better if you can bring it back in the specific as a quorum, at least two of the three of you, and then, you know, go take a position. On this one with BLM Table Rocks, you have a position. You're against the restrictions continually. Not, they're not additional restrictions, but they want to continue them, and you're against that. So, and I think each one of these things that come up, or each one of these people that come and talk to you, you can begin formulating positions on these individual things, which is what you said you wanted to do in terms of how this would be organized. You can change it up. You don't have to do it that way, but that's the way your policy's written right now, and that's the agreement that the board had when they set up the liaisons.
Okay. And I think we're, I think we're pretty good with that. Thanks for bringing that up. And this is a segue right to the next item on the agenda. This is, this is kind of a result of what we were talking about.
Doug asked for number five, discussion of draft letter proposed by the commissioner regarding wilderness creation.
So if I understand it correctly, before we jump to number five, we're not going to propose a written policy that we have, a, a big general process? That's why I was wondering if we are or not.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
Well, we should be, just because there could be something, and that's a good example of those two roads.
That's, that's why I wanted to ask the question for clarification for myself. The, you guys, I understand you may, I said this out early, has everybody had a chance to read this later? The concept is, is the Saucy Group Manufacturing versus Salazar decision for the D.C. Court, District Court came out and basically mandates the harvest of sustainable yield within the Medford BLM district. And as I thought, as I read through the memorandum of opinion by the judge, and I looked at some of the stuff that's happening, I see a political maneuver that's starting to move through by the creation of a double staircase in the wilderness area. So this would be a letter basically from the board of directors saying, hey, let's focus on O and C and getting things back where they're supposed to be and not focus on getting our economies running again and jobs back in place before we start recreating wilderness areas. And the intent would be to go to Doc Hastings Committee in the House side of Congress, because the Senate's already passed these wilderness areas. So this would have influence with the House side.
And it's interesting that, I just read in the paper this morning, there's an article on BLM and back to the Whopper situation. I was thinking of your letter, the letter wilderness originated from and, and that. And it seems to me like they're moving, again, you two are, are experts, but it seems to me like no matter what we do, BLM, they want to do anyway. That's what I got out of that article today about, they're going to look at that, but it didn't seem to be following where the judge just got through saying, you will, and BLM was saying, oh, we might, we're going to kind of look at their stuff. For the uneducated like myself and these issues, so that, that seemed kind of cross purpose. Isn't this letter a copy of another letter that was sent that I thought I saw about a month or so ago, that I thought was from AFRC or something that they had sent?
I don't know if it's a copy. They might have some concepts in there.
Okay, because when I read this, I thought, wait a minute, I've read this before. So that's why I thought, but I couldn't remember where it was. I tried to find it yesterday and couldn't find it.
This was drafted specifically for this.
It was.
So there's a lot of moving parts. I mean, obviously, this is really a political statement. And it, it does align with your guys' policies, I think, for, for the most part. The wilderness areas were obviously in the course of being created prior to the judge's ruling. And some of that is a maneuvering rather than, you know, just an end game for, for a different purpose. But the, the judge's ruling also is likely to be appealed in a, in a deal term. So, I mean, I just think you're reinforcing your, your political position, and I don't think there's anything in there that competes.
There's nothing new in here. But.
It's my knowledge, John, this isn't the AFRC's.
Okay. I, I just, you know, when I read it, I thought, I read this a lot.
Similar version.
Okay, similar, okay. So what you're asking is that we would write this letter from the.
Consider using this letter as the board's letter to send it off to Congress, Doc Hastings Committee, and the Oregon.
Oregon delegation.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, that's exactly what we've said numerous times already. The only, the only new step on this is the, is the rough and ready closure. Do you, did you send the electronic draft to staff so they can put it on your alert app?
I did, I think.
Well, that's right. It's electronic.
Yeah, that's how this was printed. I'll send it.
Yeah, we can put it on the alert app.
All righty.
Are all three of you signing?
Yeah, I'm going to all three sign it. Okay. Number six, continuation.
Number seven.
Because number seven is the one. Next item on the agenda is discussion of consideration and permutation of various agencies of all coordination to be with the board of commissioners.
The, basically, sort of putting us in from our previous conversation, specifically of the Natural Resource Conservation Services, Conrad that came before us on Wednesday's meeting. But I did get that package, and dropped the package. Would like to come express to alert us because she is a USDA employee, federal employee, and would like to talk to us about what's going on in Jackson County. And it's. what's going on within Jackson County. And that's one specific, and to meet some of that coordination requirements from her agency.
Well, I think, I mean, I was kind of surprised to see this, because we have invitations. We invite folks to come in and talk to us on a wide range of issues, and, and obviously the issues with the federal lands and agencies is, is higher priority, but it's all, sure, I'd say, why wouldn't invite folks to come in and talk to us?
I just like the extent of the invitation, and I'm not going to do that without talking to the business person.
Well, I think what, what do on that is, we notify staff, what we'd like to do, that they, they put it on the agenda, and everything. If there's an issue, discuss it individually with us when we go around. But, is your idea that, that like every meeting, we would invite a different agency, or just agencies that have a project coming up, or...
There's projects coming up. And some kind of, and I think the, the big general concept is like what we did with BLM. They, they gave us a list of all their upcoming projects, so that we could get ahead of that kind, and we can build that kind of rapport with the different organizations, so that we are coordinating with the, the federal side within the county, so that we can have that conversation. So, when Evelyn comes here, okay, Evelyn, thank you for everything you're doing this year, what's underwritten for next year? So, we have an idea of what's going on, and it gives us the opportunity to have that annual report, sort of like what Vincent does with Vista.
Yeah.
I'm all right with that.
Okay, um, that's all.
So, we can direct staff to invite them.
Sure, sure. That concludes the, the general meeting agenda of all, and next we'll move into executive session.